Regular meeting of the school committee for April twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll start with the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take two. Superintendent, call to order.
Ms. Chilu.
Here.
Ms. Comnia.
Present.
Ms. Crowley.
Present.
Mr. Lipsit.
Here.
Mr. Morena.
Present.
Dr. Wells.
Yeah.
Mr. Kissel.
Here. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes of three twenty-nine, twenty-three.
Motion to approve. First one.
Yep, first one. Got an approval, we have.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And also the same action on four twelve, four, four twelve, twenty-three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, all set. All right, now we have public comment. A couple of things I should probably say from the beginning. We are being recorded. If you do have cell phones on, please silence those at this point of being recorded by the local cable. And we're now open to public comments. Does anyone that would like to speak, please? Oops. Okay, my name's Eric Scarborough. I live at Woburn, fifty-three Micham Road. I'm also a high school history teacher for the last seventeen years. Is that all the intro I need to do?
That's it.
Okay, that's it. Good. All right. So, North Reading, Burlington, Topsfield, Medford, Winchester, Arlington, all of them have gym twice a week. Multiple specials a week in Wakefield, Lexington, Wellesley. At least two specials of the same special a week with those places. Not just gym twice a week. Art twice a week, perhaps music. Wakefield, Lexington, Wellesley. Woburn is not falling behind. Woburn is already behind. And we all know that comes down to the budget. Comes down to the budget. And we especially know that one man controls that budget, and that's Mayor Scott Galvin. You guys don't unfortunately control it. The superintendent doesn't control it. It comes down to that one man. And you proposed a sixteen and a quarter percent increase. And now, as of yesterday, it's down to eleven point six-six percent. What does that mean? Nine positions cut administration support instructional, not filling retirements, no new specialists. We need to fight for a budget that is not a disservice to our students. Now is the time to stand up. Now is the time to speak out. And what does that mean? It means that any budget below sixteen and a quarter percent proposed by the mayor is a disservice to our students. Simple as that. And that means going public. And this is not public enough because no one watches school committee meetings. Let's be honest, they don't. Okay? You've got to go to the Times. You've got to put out a joint statement and say anything lower than sixteen and a quarter percent is not good enough for our students. You've got to go to Facebook. You've got to go to Twitter. You've got to post on every Woburn residents page you can and say that sixteen point two-five percent? That's where we need to be. No lower than that. Because only one man controls that budget. And he needs to be pressured by Woburn and its citizenry and its local politicians to do better by our students. Woburn children deserve better. And we need to call, not just on the school committee to do this, but on the city council as well. Make it public. Make it known that anything lower is not good enough. It's that simple. And now is the time to stand together. The teachers have, without a doubt, certainly made their voices heard. Parents are making their voices heard. They're more involved than they've ever been, coming to school committee meetings and talking, posting on Facebook. They are angry too. They want better for their children. And as a father of two mostly delightful children, I want better for them as well. It's that simple. Okay? So, business as usual and not speaking up and not going public and not going to the Times and not posting where it needs to be posted is not good enough. Now is the time for all of us to stand together, do what's right by Woburn students, and not accept a budget that's a disservice to our children. It's that simple. Sixteen and a quarter percent. Speak up. Your constituents deserve it. The children deserve it. We all deserve a high-class education in Woburn. If Lexington and Wellesley and Wakefield and Burlington and Topsfield and Medford and Winchester and Arlington and North Reading can do it, we can too. We're in better financial straits than any of them. That is all. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to speak in front of the school committee? All right. No one? Just wanted to make a note that City Council Liaison Charles Vailor could not be here this evening. But I do want to recognize Council President Michael Concanon, and I think.
Bob Ferrulo.
Yeah, I saw Bob, but I was just want to make sure. And then Council Large Bob Ferrulo as well. Thank you very much. All right. Any comments from any other councils, just in general?
No, I won't say.
Okay, thank you. Also here, student representative to the school committee, Brandon Rabafetti, is here as well, so he's going to make a little talk.
At the high school, we have some very notable and important calendar events coming up. Starting with tonight, World Language Honor Society induction from six to eight P.M. in the WMHS auditorium. All school committee members are welcome to attend right after this meeting is concluded. Four twenty-nine, this coming Saturday is Tanaka from eleven A.M. to three P.M. at Woburn Memorial High School. Thank you to Ms. Tifo and her staff for organizing such a great community event. On May the fourth, Star Wars Day, there is a second spring job there at the Woburn Memorial High School wrestling from eight thirty to eleven A.M. Any and all students interested are encouraged to attend. The day after, on May the fifth, senior progress reports are due. Also on that very same day, grade nine is having their freshman dance from seven P.M. to ten P.M. in the Woburn Memorial High School foyer. Thank you to Ms. Curran for organizing this event for our freshman class. On May eleventh is Woburn Memorial, is WMHS multicultural night from six to eight P.M. in the Woburn, in the high school cafeteria and senior cap. This will be a night for students and parents to experience many different cultures at our high school. There will be food, music, games, raffles, and much more. Thank you, Ms. Gillis, and the language acquisition team for organizing this first-ever event at Woburn High School. All school committee members are welcome to attend. The following day, which is the fifth, the twelfth of May, the class of two thousand and twenty-five is having their sophomore semi, sophomore semi at the high school front. Seven fifteen in the main foyer. On the sixteenth and seventeenth of May, we are having Spring two thousand and twenty-three MCAS mathematics for grade seven. Two days later on, on May eighteenth, is the final day of classes for seniors and their final exams are already the nineteenth, all the way to the twenty-fourth of May. Have a nice rest of your night, everyone, and go Kansas.
Good job.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments for Brandon?
That update was amazing.
Very good.
Great job.
Not necessarily for Brandon, but maybe just give us some information. The rain date is Saturday, June third, and it looks like the graduation's at ten o'clock in the morning.
The rain date time?
Traditionally, it's been at an afternoon, but I just didn't know if there's some.
I can check.
Yeah. Yeah. It might be hard for parents that have kids that play soccer and other things and stuff like that. Hopefully, we won't need it.
Right.
We should just clarify it before we get there. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, so we're all set with Brandon? Oh, he's still. I was like, wow, you just scooted up.
Picked him out already.
No, because he was right behind Bob. All right, so no other questions, we're good?
He runs track.
Yeah.
He's fast.
Thank you very much, Brandon. Appreciate that. All right, next, we have reports and presentation of the superintendent and staff, starting with grant updates. Working together on this is Assistant Superintendent Maureen Ryan and Courtney Young. There's a packet.
So, there's a few different grants that we've received over the past few months that we just thought the committee and public might want to learn about. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Young and Ms. Ryan.
Sure. So, this is certainly not everything that we've received. I think it's really just to follow it on a few things that we haven't really necessarily had a chance to talk too much about. One of the grants that we already receive in Woburn is the SCL mental health grant. And that grant we have had for a few years. That supports a lot of our after-school clinicians and things like that. We were able to receive some additional funding that was targeted towards some training for staff, and we're excited to be able to offer a training that has come through my office quite a bit in terms of staff looking for. And that will be some options for responsive classroom training this summer as well as over the next school year for staff who are interested in that training. The next one's you.
We have also, over the course of this full year, I've had several requests for Lynn Lyons. Lynn is nationally recognized, and she is a licensed, she's a social worker who is an expert with anxiety. And we are fortunate enough to have Lynn joining us next fall for a six-week series that will be addressing anxiety. And she will also be providing a half-professional development day for appropriate staff specifically to target students that are struggling with anxiety. So, we're very, we're happy to have her come in.
I was going to say too, that that also was brought to us by a staff member requesting.
Yes. Okay, this next one is the STOP grant. We were recently awarded a sixty thousand dollar grant. The STOP grant is students, teachers, and officers preventing school violence. The intention is prevention. It's to put together programs and teams to prevent violence before it occurs. And in terms of school safety, this is something that is, it's really important, and we were very fortunate to receive this award. Next slide on this. So, through this grant, we will be assembling crisis teams with approximately fifty-five people spread across all ten buildings. The teams will have C-STAT training, which is comprehensive school threat assessment guidelines. We will be doing both Level One and Level Two, as well as suicide prevention and psychological first aid. And the goal here is to have teams in the buildings, where we work together with teachers and with offices, to identify and prevent acts of violence before they occur. So, we're actually pretty excited, and this is something that we are starting over the next few weeks to get together. And it is an initiative that will obviously carry into next school year as well.
And the last one, we discussed a little bit in our subcommittee, but we have a partnership with Melrose Public Schools in which we applied for and received the genocide grant through the Department of Education. And this is allowing us to have teachers currently at the high school. Kathy Boje, the history curriculum coordinator, has been working with the Melrose Public Schools to provide professional development to staff as well as supporting and integrating this important work through their current curriculum. And it's thanks because we've been able to work with the teachers in Melrose. So, anytime they were able to provide people with that kind of collaboration and partnership across district is always a nice opportunity. Again, this is not all of them. This is just some of the ones that have kind of come up recently.
Snapshot.
This is not my data snapshot. It's a different snapshot.
We also, just a reminder, we have a partnership grant with the Burlington Public Schools funded by Senator Friedman for access, medical access. I think the next physical night is May first, correct?
Next week, yes.
So, next week. And so, that's an ongoing initiative. Dr. Conti and I spoke actually today about, we have a nurse ready, willing, and able to work throughout the summer so that there'll be no gap in students enrolling and having their medical needs taken care of. So, again, just a local partnership with Grantland.
Excellent. Dr. Wells?
Yeah, with the genocide education professional, could you maybe just elaborate a little bit more about what the law says and how we're reading the law?
So, we have a requirement, and I'm looking at, Ms. Lipsit probably knows even better than I do, but we have a requirement to be integrating genocide in the curriculum in a purposeful way. And I think one of the things is that we can easily say that we do, because we talk about these instances across the curriculum. And again, I am not going to know as well as Kathy would tell you this, but we could easily say that we do this work. The goal of this is to bring awareness about discussing genocide in the curriculum in ways that we don't typically, and by highlighting them in kind of instances that are not as common. We kind of have the same ones that are continually talked about through a child's education, and it's really focusing on kind of lesser-known or lesser-discussed so that they are kind of getting a broader scope of the impact of genocides across.
So, maybe if I could make a suggestion, maybe we could have her come in.
Sure.
And, you know, once they've figured out what they're going to do, maybe in the fall, just sort of expand on what you've provided us.
Would you like to go through the curriculum subcommittee for that or full meeting?
Yeah.
We should make everybody be exposed to this.
Still, absolutely.
Sure.
Always a fan of main stage history.
We can do a preliminary thing at the curriculum if you want.
And Kathy's happy to speak about it, and I also think that I know that the educators at the high school that have had the opportunity to do it probably could also speak to a lot of the thoughts around the courses. I know there's been discussions around courses that they're looking to develop based off of the work, some cross, kind of cross-content courses that have come up similar to the American studies that we had learned about. So, I think there's a lot of kind of different things that have come up.
And then with regard to the staff, could you explain the parent involvement in this? Like, it sounded like, well, you know, are parents going to be notified that maybe their child's been identified as a risk, having a risk factors to help? You know, because we want to incorporate parents in this too.
Yes, so I think part of the training is the process for all of that, how you identify, how you notify, how you provide assistance and support.
Okay. So, again, once that's fully more developed, I would probably be good to follow up on that too. Thank you.
Excellent. Ms. Crowley?
Ms. Young, would you like to talk a little bit about what a responsive classroom is in the SCL grant and what kind of outcomes are you hoping for?
Sure. So, this training, we've kind of offered bits and pieces of it over the past few years, and it's kind of one that kind of, every time we offer kind of these one-day sessions or half-day sessions, they fill up pretty quickly. And then I had some educators reaching out about attending one that was being offered this summer locally. So, when we were able to get some, the kind of additional funding, it seemed like it was a nice opportunity for us to be able to provide that opportunity within the district over the course of the next year so more people can have access to it if we're looking for it. It's a four-day training, and it is working on setting up kind of classroom routines. It's really about kind of establishing kind of that classroom community. It really focuses on kind of running morning meetings, kind of ways that you can be using incentives in the classroom, and different ways in terms of kind of mitigating certain behaviors. And it's really, this is a kind of tier one. And again, this was in hope to bring something in that has come up a few times that people have asked for, that we can provide for kind of closer to home, as well as we're going to be able to offer some options for those who would like to use time over the summer, but also some options throughout the school year, break it up over some, kind of some afternoon time, during the daytime, kind of so that there's different ways people can access it.
That's great.
Yeah.
So, it's more of a, when we talk about SCL, it's more of a preventative atmosphere of the issues.
Setting up classrooms.
That's awesome. And Ms. Ryan, like in terms of Lynn Lyons, what outcomes are you hoping for, for having her come?
I think with the SCL needs, the social and emotional needs that we see with students, our clinicians in the district, whether it's the school psychologists, the social workers, the school adjustment counselors, even teachers. I think having more professional development and the best tools that we can have so that we can address the needs of the students is really what we're looking for. And she was, I had several requests. She was a little bit challenging to book, but I am, I'm hopeful that this will give our staff, you know, more tools to work with the needs of the students that they're seeing.
Thank you. I hear from a lot of parents that anxiety is pretty presenting a lot in the classroom, so I really appreciate you being proactive about that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
No problem. Ms. Lipsit?
I didn't want to leave our last grant out, so I wanted to just more commend you on the STOP grant. You know, I think we hear a lot about physical security, about responses to incidents, and obviously, that's an incredibly important conversation to have. And I, you know, I know we got some citizen feedback on that recently, but, you know, it's violence prevention, it's suicide prevention. I mean, these are the things that are going to keep our kids safe on a day-to-day basis. The interventions that, you know, maybe don't make the headlines as much, but are critically, critically important. So, I'm really happy to see that coming to Woburn as well. So, thank you.
Excellent. Good? All right. Move right along. Thank you very much. And actually, Courtney, you're going to be up again. Kindergarten update, Assistant Superintendent Courtney Young, please.
So, one of the things that we've discussed before, we talked a lot about registrations and enrollment, and especially, we talk about kindergarten. We have seen over the past few years, whether COVID-related or just the general area of kindergarten, that we've had a lot of students who are enrolling over the summer. And so, the beginning of the year is coming, and we are seeing kind of a larger scope of needs, especially in our K classrooms. And part of that for us was kind of examining our process in which we're screening students, our process for kind of kindergarten in general. And so, we took some time, myself and Ms. Ryan and Nora Murphy, who is currently our pre-K coordinator. So, she really spent some time speaking with building principals as well as with us and kind of looking at the process for kindergarten, our kind of kindergarten students in ways that we could make it, I guess, better. So, what we are looking at, and this is kind of more so just to kind of discuss because it's a change, is shifting the first two days of kindergarten of how our kindergartners start in the fall. So, we'll still have our get-ready day this June, but starting in September, those first two days that we start before the weekend, the Thursday, Friday, our kindergarten students will have a modified start and end time. They'll start, they will start at nine and end at twelve-thirty. This will allow students to be, our kindergartners, to be accessing the bus by themselves, both beginning of the day and at the end of the day, as well as this will provide them the ability to transition into the building with just the principals and the teachers and have kind of introduction to school. Lunch will still be served, as well as all students will now be able to be screened during those first two days. Part of that is, is that we are screening a very, actually, a very small number of our students in the spring. It is very difficult to kind of get all of the screening in. And then we're starting the beginning of the year, and then we're trying to find all these ways to be screening students for the month of September. This will ensure that we're screening all of our kindergarten students in front of us at once for the two days. And the part of the rationale for the early end is it will provide time for all of the test administrators, so those who are giving the assessment screening tool, and the classroom teachers, to be able to have a conversation about every single kindergarten student. And then at that time, then they will be placing students into their kindergarten classroom and assignments, and students will be assigned on that Friday for the start the following Monday. So, they won't get their class assignment until. So they won't get their class assignment until after they've all been screened those first two days. This is, we spent a great deal of time looking at how other communities were, again, for kind of a multitude of different reasons, and felt that this was something for us to try. I think there'll be a lot of discussing it from a lot of different ends in terms of what it looks like after, and if it's something that we were to continue with. But we felt like, given kind of all of the different pieces, that it was the right decision for us to try for this fall.
Ms. Chisholm?
On the time, so these kids are bussed, how are we going to do that with the busing situation? Are we going to be having our buses to drop our kids at elementary school and then go back and reroute?
Yes. So the students, so we worked, we've had, we've discussed with the bus company regarding the times that they would have to do. So the students would, they would do their elementary route, and then they would go back and do their, the elementary route.
So a parent could have a first grader kindergarten, is going to have to stand there and wait for them to come back around again? And just, I mean, have we gotten any feedback? I know this is new, and we have to approve something of this, but I just, I think this is going to be very confusing. I would rather have had it two days prior to school starting at all. I know that that might be difficult, but it just seems like this is going to be extremely confusing and really burdensome to a lot of parents, especially the 12:30. Who's going to be there to get these kids if they're coming home at 2:30? They may have a high school kid that was going to babysit. I just hope it works. But I think, I see a lot of questions, answers, and notifications, statistics for parents. And we think that in those two days, we're going to get all those kindergarten kids are going to be screened. I just have a lot of concerns, I'll just tell you that, for those two days.
All set, Pat?
Yep.
Dr. Wells?
Yeah, no, I was just wanting to follow up a couple of things that Pat said. You know, I understand maybe the dismissal at 12:30, but I'm not sure the benefit of having them start later. You know, as Pat said, it creates confusion getting your kids to school. We have to disrupt one partner, so we disrupt one rather than two. The other question I had, now, you mentioned other districts, are they doing this, too? Because I just think those first two days for kindergartners, you know, maybe they're, you know, confused, so to speak, because it's a new environment, you know, a lot of things are happening. And are other districts doing it, or, you know, is it going to skew our results? Because the parent, the kid, the students are going to be in a new environment, and all of a sudden we're testing them. And, you know, I don't know enough about the testing to know how much the environment, you know, affects that. So I was just wondering.
I do think that it is, it is common in other districts. Many kindergartners don't start at the same time as first graders, and that the first few days of school is often used as a softer transition for kindergarten students. I think that the real benefit here is that the kindergartners that we are seeing have, and some of this is post-COVID, but a very wide range of needs. And the ability to balance the classrooms, I think, is significant. Being able to look at the kindergartners as a whole with, you know, the registrations that have come in over the summer and the development that kindergartners have had over the summer, I think it will really allow us to balance the classrooms so that all of the students benefit from it.
So that means that they won't know which classroom they're going to be in until all of this is done? So we've got to make that clear so that parents know that. The other thing is, you were getting the questionnaires only in two languages, it looked like, and it wasn't clear to me whether that's really sufficient or environment.
So that's what the test itself provides. We provide alternative translation through other options. That's just saying that that's the testing.
Okay, all right, so we have other.
Only provides us with them translated as those two, but then we do other options outside of it.
And, you know, just to clarify for the big audience that we have on TV, ESI?
That is the name of the assessment.
Yeah, but what is it assessing?
So that's the Early Screening Index, and so that's what looks at their developmental readiness. So it has a range of motor, shape identification, things of the sorts.
Any language skills, things like, so a whole?
Yes.
Thank you.
It's about a 15-minute assessment.
Ms. Lipsen?
So just as the representative of people who will have incoming kindergartners this year, I'm just curious, as students are being screened, what are, is this something that's going to be able to be applied to all students at once? What are other students going to be doing as the screening is being applied to some? How, I assume kindergarten teachers are going to take the bulk of that, I just wanted to see if.
See, the kindergarten teachers don't do the screening. The screening is done by special education staff for all related service providers. And so the students will be in the classroom, and they'll be pulled out one at a time for about the 15-minute assessment.
That was my question.
That was the way that it was previously done, before we did it, when they came in. The students were, during the first two weeks of school, they were, they were screened and all pulled from their classrooms. But what we have not been able to do in the past is then have the person who screened the student, and then the teachers be able to sit down and have that dialogue about it. The other part is that we have not had kind of unified notification regarding students' outcome on the screening tool. And so this will provide that all students, regardless if they are, if they did well, or if they are kind of were flagged in some area, will all receive notification after those two days of their students' kind of readiness.
Okay.
I mean, it sounds like a good idea in principle. I do share some of Mrs. Chisholm's concerns, and in a very real and potent way. But, you know, I'm hoping that notifications will go out very early and, you know, that extra care will be taken to make sure that we're reaching all parents and all families to make sure that they know of the schedule.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Ms. Crowley?
I think this is a great idea. I think having more information about our youngest learners ahead of time before they enter into a full-day classroom is a really good idea. And I also like the idea of slowing down the entry into kindergarten so the kids can have an opportunity to see what it's like to be in kindergarten prior to being there. And doing this screening is going to hit, you know, for our dyslexia guidelines and all of that, looking at early literacy issues. I mean, this is, I think this is great. So I want to thank Dr. Murphy and, Murphy, right?
Yes.
Thank you for, you know, giving her expertise in this. I just think this is, this is just another way in which we can be more proactive, identifying learners that may have challenges, and we can address those and build classrooms that are responsive. It's definitely in line with the mission of, you know, Wuburn Public Schools, so thank you.
And I can certainly go back to some of, kind of some of the questions that we had this evening.
Thanks.
Sure.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. So now we're on to the fiscal year 2024 update. Assistant Superintendent Bob Alcanado, please.
So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alcanado momentarily. Before I do that, I want to just talk a little bit about the shifting demographics in Wuburn. I'm not from Wuburn, despite my last name being Crowley, but I have seen in my time here a change. And what I did actually for this slide was to pull from DESI the data from 2019, 2020 compared to this year's data. And, you know, to the educators that are here, the classrooms look different, and they feel different today than they did in 2019, 2020. And we know that, and for a lot of different reasons, the pandemic being one of them. But who's in the classroom also has an impact on what's happening in the classroom. And so this is, again, just data pulled from DESI. So in 2019, the first language not English was 20.4. So approximately one-fifth of our students go home and are not speaking English at home. And that's up to 20.9 this year. In our EL population, again, I just pulled from 2019, the population of our English-language learners has increased from 9% in 2019 to 10.8% this year. I can go back just a few more years to 2016, 17, and it was, I think, 5% and 6%. So it's more than doubled in a short amount of time. Our low income, the percent increase, has gone from 28.3% to 38.7%. And so in just a short amount of time, the number of students that qualify as low income has increased dramatically. The students with disabilities, we talk a lot about special education, and there's a range, as we keep talking about here. Not all students with disabilities are the same disabilities. However, the percent increase has gone from 17.5% of students with disabilities to 20.6% of students with disabilities. And this is pulled in October, so that percentage is most likely higher at this point. So, and then the high needs, which merges all of these together, the students in 2019, 45.4%, and in '22, '23, our high-needs population as a district is 53.6%. And so we, again, we talk about the changing demographics, the changing realities, and this is done in the midst of a pandemic. And so the work that's happened in the Wuburn Public Schools over the past few years has been remarkable. I think we're doing a great job meeting the needs of all of our kids, but they're coming in with gaps. They're coming in needing more than they ever have, and we need to provide more than we ever have. And so I did this on purpose because we're going to go into budget, and I, you know, we're asking for more than we ever, ever had to. So I just want to set the table with data, with real data. We've talked about the number of students moving in. Since we set a budget, we've had over 70 students with special education students move in since we set the budget. We've added four elementary classrooms last summer when we set the budget. And so that we are clearly move, the target is moving. And so this process is evolving, and I, again, am just trying to highlight the realities of what's happening in our schools.
I've got a question on that. But can you really add all those up? Because shouldn't some people be in multiple categories, so if you add?
Yes.
But did you add, or is that like counting one person?
This is DESI's reported data, so there are students who could be considered in multiple categories.
Right.
DESI takes that into account.
Yeah, that's what I want to say. If we don't have 53% of our population as high-needs of ours, of 53, because if you add all those up.
That, if you added all those up, it would be a, pardon me, that's to you. It would be a higher number than 53. This takes into account that students are in multiple categories.
Yes. I was going to say, the high-needs is actually going to be your most clear number, because that's where you don't get your double counts.
So it could be somebody that's English, an English learner, low income.
The high-needs is the sum of, sum of the four categories?
All of the students who fit at least one of those categories, yeah.
Ms. Lipsen?
Question. Then who are our comparables now? What does this look like? Who are, we used to be.
Nofer, Medford.
Rain Tree. I'm just, I'm wondering.
Yeah, so I actually, on DESI, there's a dark analysis. I would say Marlborough is a comparable to us right now. Barnstable down on Cape Cod is a comparable to us right now. Peabody is a comparable to us right now. As far as the size of district and percent of high-needs, special ed, EL, et cetera. So our comps have changed, I think, is what you're, what you're asking. Yes.
Is this going to increase our chapter 70, then?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
Did we see an increase from 23 to 24?
Yes, approximately $900,000.
Oh, right, that's right.
That's right.
Ms. Crowley?
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Lipsen?
Just in terms of, you know, other surrounding communities, are we seeing, because I know, you know, surrounding communities are seeing increases in especially, you know, English-language learners, in low income. My sense is that Wuburn's increases are moving at a higher pace than surrounding communities. Is that fair to say? I mean, I don't know if you've, if you've compared with everyone around, you know, immediately geographically around us, but I just wondered if you have any thoughts on what those comparisons were like.
So part of the reason why we partnered with Burlington on the medical grant is Burlington seeing some increases that they've never seen before? For particularly EL students coming or without educational backgrounds? But the rate at which they're coming to Burlington is not as high as Wuburn, but they're still coming?
When I, when I was looking at this data, Andrew kind of dealt with similar thought. I can't speak to the surrounding areas, but I can, I did look at like the state growth. And I would say that we're consistent with some, with our state growth. Some of them we're getting a little bit closer. The one that we are absolutely changing with more than around us, as well as statewide, is students with disabilities. And that percentage, we are, we are above, we're above, and that percentage, like that growth with the state over these coastal, these years, we are not in line.
So students with disabilities in 2019 was 17.5%. Now it's 20.6, and I think it's probably higher. The state is 19.4, so we've gone up above the state average.
I would, I would add to that, the, I mean, this was probably the October data. So that percentage is already considerably higher. And, but I think what we're seeing in Wuburn that I think is different from what other communities are seeing is that in that bar of students with disabilities, we are seeing a much greater percentage of students with severe disabilities. Students that have very, you know, significant challenges that are, that are coming to the district. And I think that's one of the pieces that is a little bit different.
What I will also say is that what is changing probably for us, that is also a little bit different, is like, is that in our low-income category, that that's becoming a big shift by our seven buildings that are going in two very different directions. And so the number is getting bigger, but I would say the distribution of it is looking different.
Okay. And, I mean, the reason I ask is exactly why, I know Dr. Crowley put this up here, is, you know, in conversations around our budget that I've been having in the community, you know, one of the questions that I get consistently asked is, well, are other communities seeing this? Are other communities, you know, facing a budget like this? And this, I think, is a piece of the explanation as to why we're not necessarily seeing this level of a budgetary need elsewhere, is that, you know, this is a community that is seeing increases in students who do need additional support. And that's something that we have, you know, perhaps in previous budget cycles, have not gotten the allocations that we've needed to keep pace, and that's coming due right now. And so we're seeing sort of a, I know, you know, Dr. Crowley has used the term perfect storm, and I think that's, that's the right, the right description here. You know, a lot of things have come together to provide us with the numbers that we're looking at, but we can't, we can't ignore this factor that our community is changing in ways that are increasing what we need to provide to our students. And if we, if we fall behind those numbers, as, as to a degree, you know, in recent allocations we have been, I think, you know, that's, that's going to be a big problem, and we're seeing that, that happening right now. So thank you for including us.
Sure. Dr. Wells?
Yeah, I just had a question. You know, with the low-income students, you know, I know we've added a lot of social support systems in our school system, which is important, but how much effect does that have on our educational programs? I'm just not clear. Like, I understand students with disabilities may need special programs, English-language learners and first language non-English. I kind of understand the needs of the school system to meet those students' needs. How does income affect what we need to provide for the educational system, not the social support, things like that?
So if you look at our MCAS data, historically, our economically disadvantaged students are performing disproportionately, you know, lower than percentage-wise of our, of our non, pretty consistently. And I would say that the gap is pretty.
But how, the question, you know, because.
What are the needs academically?
How do we meet the needs of those students, yeah?
Yeah. I think that it, that ultimately comes to a few different pieces of it. One of it is just that needing, especially when we're looking at our elementary schools, is looking at intervening with students earlier and having the resources for them to be provided small group targeted instruction as early as possible, and helping students close gaps before it gets to the point that they're qualifying for special education, not because of them, of being identified special education, but because they were, did not have the same access to educational experiences previously. I certainly think, too, again, I think there's a lot of different parts of it. It can be connected to student absences, it can be, you know, that can be linked to food insecurity, which can be students' engagement in class. I mean, I think that you could go for a lot of different ways. It's not really like one thing. But I think that the needs are certainly greater and the support's necessary in school.
What's that?
If I could, the administration, these numbers in this graph are very informative. When it came out in October, here we are six months later. Any indication of when DESI would do an upgrade, update on any of this?
So, I think we, we typically look at the October report that is submitted to DESI. However, I think we, we follow a lot of these numbers very carefully within district. I mean, I, I can tell you specifically with special education that the numbers, you know, are, are closer to twenty-three percent at this time. But the October one report is typically the numbers that we focus on from the Department of Education.
And we do that because then we're comparing apples to apples.
Right. The reason I ask that is because here we are, you know, transitioning into budget season, and it's been brought over this table many times now, so, I mean, looking at these numbers, the needs, categories, that equals money. Plain and simple. So, we're back to the drawing board with money to wait for the next October report to tell us that we're still where we're at, and we haven't done anything to address it.
Yeah, so I, I guess, if, if I'm interpreting your comment correctly, part of the, part of our budget asks are tied to the fact that we're not, we're actually not waiting for next October, we're tracking it now.
Okay.
And we're, we're looking at our, our populations right now and projecting what we will need for September.
Yeah.
So, I, I believe that's what you're alluding to.
And it's probably too difficult for you, I'm doing DESI, probably has, you know, people doing it, but it doesn't really show ages or grades. Is this just families? How is it, how is it raised?
You can break it down by, by grade, by school, by, you know, you can get very granular, yes. But for the sake of just the macro.
It's informative enough, but I just, you know, if you really want to hone in on something that we have a significant need for, then, you know, it would be digging a little bit deeper to find that out, so.
Yes, yeah.
It is available.
And it is available, it's publicly available, so, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
I was just gonna say, I think a piece of the data too, as always, is it's not necessarily the October to October, and I think that you're only gonna get so much information out of every piece of data, like every kind of data point you look at. I think that a big part that we talk about a lot is the fact that, like, the, the essence of it being a fluctuating number is a part of the, of the data, right? It's the pa, it's the fact that the number goes up and goes down, and students move in and move out, and that's a piece of the puzzle that doesn't really matter, the number, it's just like the essence that it's at such a large rate, and in some of our buildings at such a higher level, where the staffing component is, is, is hard to really show in a, in a data this part, because just, even though it looks like at the, on paper, they're consistently having twenty-five ML students, it could be a different, you know, group of ML students over the course of six months, and that means very different workload for the educator who has that group. And I think that's the same if we're talking about special education, or, you know, students who are in kind of different kind of places of this. I think that the fluctuating number just matters in essence that it is going up and down, no matter how much it's going up or down.
Thank you.
What else?
Yeah, I was wondering whether maybe through curriculum, we can look at this a little further, because what it does, it gives you an opportunity to try to determine which of our programs are working and which ones aren't for the different categories by looking, you know, let's say we take first language, not English, but looking at them, are they meeting benchmarks through their time in the Woburn School System? If they're not, then that means we have to do something different. If they are, that means our programs are working. But I think we have to break it down, as Mr. Mallrennan said, to kind of look at them over the course of their time in the Woburn School System.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, maybe we can do that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Good with that. So, update on the budget? Yes. You should have a couple of sheets in your packet. So, yeah, if you could blow that up just to one hundred and twenty-five percent. Thank you, Dr. Crowley. Wanted to give you an idea of where we, where we've, where we were and, and where we are now. As you know, we began this process, we talked with all of the educators across the district, we talked with the other support staff that provide the infrastructure to educate our children. We put a budget together. As you can see right there, the initial FY24 budget, which was a twenty-one point seven one percent increase. You might remember that, that that was, we were dealing with. When we, once we did that, we knew that we were projecting about one point seven million dollars in ESAR funds that we could use in FY24. As you know, it needs to be used by September thirtieth of 2024. Once we applied that one point seven, we were at nineteen point three nine percent, and you might remember that number as well. Then we went to work in terms of looking at the requests in the budget that we could pull back. That list that you see below the nineteen percent is mainly FY24 asks of positions that we, at that point, eliminated or, or removed, and/or moved them to grants. The largest line item there is the million dollars for the out-of-district tuition. Ms. Ryan does a fantastic job working her list and looking at her, her numbers, and we were able to reduce the twelve point five million dollar appropriation to twelve million dollars, and the other five hundred thousand would come in a rollover of the IDA grant. So, there's the million dollars by reducing the appropriation and adding another half a million dollars from, from the grant. That was, that was really the big part. And as you can see, there are a number of positions that we initially asked for, which we then took right out of the, the budget. That brought us down, if you could just scroll down a little bit, that brought us down to sixteen point two seven, which I believe is the number we were considering a couple of weeks ago at our last school committee meeting, or right, right around that, that figure. Over the last couple of weeks, we've continued to refine some numbers, and when we, we reduced the capital line items, which are in IT and facilities, to zero dollars, because we had some indication that that would be covered on the city side. And then we continue with staff offsets and retirements and personnel moves. When those retirements come in, it can save money depending on, depending on who's retiring, how we budget to bring people to replace them. That got us to fourteen point five three percent, which is a number that the finance committee had, was considering, I think, forty-eight hours ago at their, at their, their last meeting. At this point, Dr. Crowley, can you hit the tab for the new position at the, the bottom? Because what I want to, what I want to show the committee is that even at fourteen point five three percent, we have still included these positions. Not all of them are in the budget, some are sitting in grants, some are sitting in ESAR, like the reading specialists and the interventionists. We have the two physical education teachers still in the budget. We've continued to invest in sped. We've continued to invest in other infrastructures, like information technology with the data administrator, and facilities in our preventive maintenance personnel and, and custodian. So, we have, with fourteen point five three percent, we have, we still have new asks, if you will, in, in the budget that would allow, certainly allow us to continue to educate our children, so.
Could you total that number? Just, oh, you, you don't have an active Excel, sorry. I thought you could just scroll down and total it.
No, sorry.
Which number, John?
The number of personnel.
Oh, I think it's...
I think, I think the, the total number of FTEs there is, is about sixty.
Yeah. So, that's sixty FTEs that are gonna be in the budget?
No, no, let me finish.
Are gonna be in the school system?
Right. About half of them would be in the budget, and half would be in grants.
Sixty new positions.
It's sixty-two and thirty.
Yes, I, I think many of them are new, although we had interventionists this year, so I, I wouldn't necessarily say that those are new positions. We had interventionists this year, but I do believe most of those are, are, are new.
So, really, it'd be nice to know how many new positions.
Yeah.
You don't have to get it right now.
Well, I think at sixty-two minus fifteen.
Okay, okay.
Well, the reading specialist, it says offset by ESAR two.
No, I don't, I, I understand that part. It's just trying to get a handle on how many new positions there are.
Okay. All right. So, if you want to switch back to the mic. So, at fourteen point five three, that's, that's essentially where we, where we were, and then we have begun to talk about additional, additional cuts. And after the fourteen point five three, we could put the five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, which would reduce most of our line items to FY23 levels. There would be some notable exceptions, exceptions, of course, such as the increase in tuition reimbursement, the out-of-district tuition, the sped transportation, and a few others. But most of the line items would be reduced to FY23 level. That would cut an additional five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars from the budget and bring us down to about thirteen point seven seven percent. After that, we would then need to begin looking at eliminating positions that have current personnel in them, if we want to go lower than that.
Or personnel that use new positions.
Yep, we, right.
Right.
There might be, there might be some vacant, vacant spots that we could continue to take from, but, yes.
Mr. Phillips.
I, I think it's important for the public to know, and so I'll ask the question that everyone knows the answer to, but I want to ask it anyway. You have had conversations with the mayor about this number. Has he indicated in any way what our appropriation might be?
I've had conversations with the mayor. I don't have a, an indication of the, of the number yet. I've been told that he's working to figure out what the city budget will look like before he gives us a, a number.
Yeah, it's, and, and I, you know, I, I appreciate all the work that you and your team have been doing with this budget, the number of hours that you've spent crafting it, the number of hours that you've spent sort of working with the mayor to try to sort of arrive at a, at a, at a number here. It is, it continues to be frustrating that we don't know what we're shooting at. I mean, honestly, we, we are throwing darts in the dark right now, and it, it makes it very, very difficult to, to get a sense of, of, you know, we, we have to make decisions as, as a body here about these positions, about these programs, and without knowing what we're shooting at, it, it makes it really, really tough. And I, I find it hard to, I find it hard to, to get to a position where I'm willing to cut more without knowing what our, what our endpoint is. I mean, I, I feel like we really need guidance on this if we're gonna go further, because I, you know, we are facing a really challenging budget. We, you know, we've, I think we've, I think you and your, your team have done a great job of, of explaining why we are where we are, that we're not adding bells and whistles, we're not adding, you know, we're not gold plating any buses here, right? I mean, this is stuff that our kids need. And so, you know, I, I find it hard to, to start looking at reductions here when, when we don't know where we're going. We've, we've done that work already, and now it's time, I think, to get some answers as to what we, what we need to meet. And that's, you know, that's just my two cents, but I, you know, I'm, I'm frustrated with this process right now.
What's that? Andrew?
Yeah, I'm good.
Mr. Brown.
Well, it's our job to deliver a budget that the administration needs in order to run the schools, and the school, and the, in order to do that, we need a thirteen point seven seven increase. So, I'm staying there, I'm not cutting anything until, you know, until I hear that that's impossible. So, I, I'm, I think that at this point, we don't need to vote, we just say, okay, we're at thirteen point seven seven, and, and just let the mayor know that if we go any deeper, then there are going to be people, and votes, I mean, at least from my sitting here, I'm not willing to do that, and I won't. So, thirteen point seven seven is what the administration needs to run schools. Case closed.
And I think that the administration can continue to keep talking to the city?
I know, and I do want to say that I, I understand any mayor who's the executor of a city is going to have a difficult time with thirteen point seven seven, so I, I understand, and I'm just trying to be level-headed about it, but I, our role as school committee is to not cut positions, you know, until like we, we are in a spot where we are told to, because the city can't afford it. We have not been told that, so I say we, like, if we're playing poker, we hold. You gotta, you gotta know when to hold them, and you gotta know...
Want to hold them, okay.
When to fold them.
You and Kenny.
Never count your money.
What else, Mr. Crowley?
Um, yes.
I see Dr. Crowley, Dr. Wells.
Yeah, so, so we have forty-seven positions that we're proposing that are new to the budget. So, I'm not sure the last time we added any positions to the budget.
Yeah. Here are the positions, again.
Yeah.
Some of them are mandated positions, as, as you can imagine.
Yep.
And so, some of them are not. We can, we can take a look at, at these, you know.
I'm just trying to, you know, when we're, you know, there was a discussion at finance about nine positions. But we're adding forty-seven, so it's not like we weren't adding any positions and we're just cutting existing staff. We're, we're looking at everything, so it, you know, I want, you know, the discussion earlier about the nine position, but that might have the forty-seven that we're potentially adding, so I think that all has to be looked at.
Yeah, so, so we, you know, candidly, we've, we've taken a look at this too, but we, this is where, you know, we, these, we, we need what we need, you know, we're asking for what, there's nothing, but there are things we can live without, yes.
So, you know, I'm not asking for a definitive budget, but I, you know, we had discussions at finance, so I'll ask the administration to come back, what would an eleven point six six budget look like? So, I'll make that motion. Not saying that's the budget we're gonna take, but to look at eleven point six six and come back to, we can either do a finance subcommittee or do a committee, a committee meeting, Chris, whatever you want to do.
Second half.
All right, the motion, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Just a, 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 not a side note, but a note is, finance subcommittee has met, administration team has gathered together, obviously, all these numbers. There was a meeting scheduled for Friday, unfortunately, it had to be canceled because we did not have a number. We had a meeting on Monday in lieu of the Friday meeting, and that should have been, in a sense, been canceled, because there was nothing really discussed, because we did not have a number. It's now Wednesday, the twenty-sixth, and we still don't have a number, or, or some idea of that's not going to work, it needs to be less, which is somewhat helpful, as we all know, at least we know that we're not banging our heads against a wall or, or thinking, hey, you know, we haven't heard, so maybe that's a good thing. So, just as a side note, we are doing our, I, I feel due diligence and, and, and meeting with the mayor and talking and so on. We just either need a number, or no, that's not going to work, I'll, I'll let you know soon, but that's not going to work. Or, that's great, you know, you were right there, right at that, at that point. Dr. Wells.
So, how did you want to handle this? Did you want to have finance meet again and review that, and then, you know?
The eleven point six?
Yeah, to look at that, or how, I, I'm just not sure how you want to proceed with this, because we have, our next scheduled meeting is like the twelfth.
Yeah, it's a ways away. What's our deadline? What's our turn?
If I can.
Public hearing.
So, we need to schedule a public hearing, and so I would recommend that you move the ninth, the meeting on the ninth to the tenth, because that would give two weeks. And I would add a public hearing for the thirteenth as well, so you have two public hearings scheduled.
That's a, that's a Saturday.
Or, is it the tenth? What's the?
Tenth is a Wednesday, if we move that.
So, then following Monday.
The fifteenth.
Fifteenth, sorry.
That's it.
Yeah, contractual obligations.
Right, so what happens?
If we are gonna be sending notices of some sort.
That would be the day of the, of the, I mean...
But does it, you know, if, I don't know, you know, is it five PM of that day, or, like, if we vote on the budget on the, that, that date, does that give you time to generate the, the letters that are required, if necessary? Shouldn't we do it like the thirteenth, like, the thirteenth? Like, we could have a finance...
Well, the thirteenth, everyone keeps saying, that's a Saturday.
I would have the tenth, the tenth. No, that's what I'm saying, we can have something, we can have something next week. I'm just not sure whether you want us to do a finance or, or committee meeting, Chris, to look at the entire... want to do a Finance or a committee meeting, Chris, to look at the entire budget thing we could do.
I believe in it. You know, probably the sooner the better. We talk it out. But again, do we have any...
Well, we're going to have to deliver something on the 13th. But why not have a meeting next week to review all our options and get a sense of the committee where we're going to go?
Okay. So you want a full...You're thinking of full?
I'm thinking full.
Well, we have...
I mean, we've had these extra budget meetings. I have no problem with it. I'm just wondering if that's going to work for everybody.
Well, we have...Okay, so we have to send something to City Hall. My thing is we just send something to City Hall, and we're going to have to get an answer.
Yeah.
We send down 11.66, he has to respond, or just submit it to the City Council and let them do that thing. I mean, we keep trying to hold back for no reason. I mean, we need to be able to get a budget. So we have to work from a date backwards. And it's not fair that, you know, if we have to notify, you know, personnel that we're hanging them by their toes until the last minute, that's...I just don't think that's fair. And I think we need to, as a body, take action and move forward. So if we can have a Finance meeting next week, and if we can have a City Hall, a whole school committee meeting next, and then just vote it and send it down.
All right. So what's your proposal for Finance? When?
We'll make a date.
So regular meetings for all of us?
Say Monday.
The 3rd?
Monday, Friday, we have negotiations.
The May 3rd. It's a Wednesday night?
No, Finance next week is what you said.
No, she sounded like she wanted two.
Well, we're going to have to do so because we have to send it down.
Finance on Monday.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to clarify. So are we doing a full committee as well as a Finance next week?
I would think so.
Yes.
And the Finance can be a committee of the whole.
I think everybody needs to be involved in this. So we don't waste another week.
Yeah.
And then we just...
Do you want to do the Finance after the negotiations, Matt?
On Monday?
Yeah, is that Tuesday?
I'm not sure we're going to have the time between now and then to...
All right.
All right. What about the 3rd? Yeah, we're talking Finance now.
Finance first.
Okay. Let's start with that. So how about...Does Tuesday work for people for Finance?
As long as I'm a baby, I can do anything.
You'll be here.
Let me just clarify. What's the purpose of having two meetings in one week as opposed to having one and just having a full committee?
Yeah. If I threw the chair to Dr. Wells. I mean, I think, you know, if we need to work through a whole lot of information on a proposed budget, I think a Subcommittee is an easier forum to do that in. But we are going to need a full committee to vote something to publish.
Send it down, correct.
So I mean, I think we do need two meetings here.
Can we do Tuesday the 2nd for the full meeting?
You need...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We need Finance first.
Right. But could you do that earlier in the day? You've done back-to-back before.
I'll do the chair. I'm just confused how it helps us to meet with the administration that morning and have them do their magic for the full board. Why do we need two meetings next week, I guess?
Oh, I thought that was what came from that side, right?
Well, I'm hearing from Matt because he's the one doing all the...
Can I?
Thank you.
Please? So I think you do need two meetings. I think you need a Finance Subcommittee meeting to work through, you know, the process and to be able to ask questions and so forth. And it could be the next day that you have a meeting of the whole. The Finance Subcommittee meeting could be, you know, attended by the meeting of the whole. The thing that I'm thinking about is I believe the...If we're going to have a public hearing on the 10th, we have to post on the 8th. I'm working backwards. And so my recommendation would be to have a Finance meeting Wednesday, if possible, and a full meeting on Thursday. And then that gives us the weekend to get things to where...
So Finance on the 3rd of May. We'll vote on this together, I guess. Finance on the 3rd of May, what time?
It's going to be 4:00.
Yeah, once you do it late, so as many people can come.
Yeah, we may want to do that at a later time so we can have...
Oh, you want to do it like 6:00?
I still can't go.
You can't go in.
That's not going to make a difference.
So we moved this to 4:00. Is that...I mean, 4:00 works for me, but I want to make sure everyone...
I'd rather do it at 6:00 if the administration doesn't mind coming. This makes it easier for me.
Does that work?
I can do.
So Finance at 6:00 on the 3rd. And the Thursday for the full regular school committee.
Yep.
7:00 PM, same. Does that work?
I note there's a WPS speaker series for that time. Okay. It's fine?
So 5:30, 6:00 PM, and...
5:30, 6:00 PM, 5:40, 7:00 PM. And then the 10th, which we are moving the 9th to the 10th. That's the public hearing?
Yes.
Do you need a seven-day publication?
We need...Do we need a seven-day notification? But then we publish the budget. I thought we had to publish the budget for 48 hours.
Yes, but you need a seven-day notice of public hearing.
The budget to be...
So we can notice, but we can send it up. It doesn't have to be the seven days after the last meeting.
No, the budget does not have to be.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. So do I have...Just to clarify, so the Wednesday, May 3rd, a 6:00 PM Finance meeting, which would be open to, you know, so everyone can be involved. Thursday, the 4th of May, a 7:00 PM...These are new meetings. 7:00 PM regular school committee meeting. The 9th, which we had scheduled for 7:00 PM, is now being, in a sense, moved to the 10th. Is that right?
Yes.
At 7:00 PM. That's the public hearing, which we need to send down 48 hours prior.
We need two weeks notice.
What's that?
I'm sorry.
Oh, all right. Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
For those changes and adjustments and so on. Second, anything on a motion? Do we have...All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So Gene, you'll make those notes, please. All right. Well, that was good. Mr. Moran?
Thank you, Jim. If I could...
You want to change some of these meetings?
No, I'm not a meeting, believe it or not. I just...I voted in favor of trying to get that 11 percent only because I'm curious to what kind of things, you know, we haven't gone after yet. So I guess I'm okay with that. But, you know, to Mr. Crowley's point, I like the 13.77 that's in front of us tonight. I don't like some of the things that we had to give up already. To Mr. Akana or Patty, I don't know. I didn't get a chance...In the old days, we used to have a big giant book on the budget. I apologize for not being in attendance at the Finance meetings. But I'm just curious on legal, our legal services over the years. Obviously, this year, legal was probably very, very high. What do we do for this budget going forward for legal? Is it a significant reduction, I hope, in sort of a non-contract year ago?
I believe your legal line item for FY '24 is funded the same amount as FY '23. There was no increase in legal.
I myself and others here at the table, we're still negotiating with other unions across the district. Just off the top of your head, Bob, if, you know, if by chance they were granted significant increases, where would that fall into moving forward again in the budget? Again, not tonight if you want to just keep that in your brain for...
No. I mean, I can answer the question. When the SEIU contracts are concluded, there will have to be an additional appropriation in the new fiscal year.
Just a couple of things that came to me that, you know, like, again, you know, the legal, any kind of dolos that we can get over here and put back into some of those things that we're missing out on. But again, Mr. Lipsett, you nailed it. The process used to be the mayor spoke to the superintendent of the administration and said, here's your number. And we do our best. I do believe, and we have a couple of councilors still in the audience, I know Ms. Crowley in years past, has the opportunity to remind the council members that they can adjust the budget after the fact. So maybe, you know, we can do something like that. Later on down the road, appropriations might be in order for, you know, significant changes after July 1. Who knows? Everything's up for grabs. Again, you know, to use Dr. Crowley's, you know, terminology, a moving target. It's moving. Tonight, you know, here we are, 8:30 tomorrow night, who knows? So I'm just...I'm kind of like, Mr. Lipsett is kind of baffled where we're going to move to from here on out. It'd be interesting to find out. And again, to address the speakers, we want to get things done. We want to get things for our students and our families and our staff. And we're doing our best. And we're trying to get the mayor on board at some point to either give us a number, or I don't...You know, Dr. Crowley, you have dates in mind because of contracts or obligations. So we are kind of...Our backs are really getting to the wall here. So I just want to, you know, try to think of any other ways we can get more money back to the programs that we've already given up. So appreciate everybody's effort on this and look forward to the upcoming efforts. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on the budget? Good? All right. Moving on to reports. Finance Subcommittee?
Yeah, Finance Subcommittee met the other day. Chairman and myself, Mr. Chisholm, Mr. Lipsett, and Mr. Kissel attended, and Ms. Crowley attended all of them. First up, let's do the list of bills. The committee recommends approval of the list of bills. I make a motion that we approve the list of bills.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Same action with the balance of council. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
As you're well aware, our primary purpose of the meeting was to look at the budget where we were and so forth. And the reason, you know, we're suggesting they look at 11.66 during our committee meeting, the administration talked about, you know, if as a last resort that would be a possibility. They would still be able to function. Wouldn't be their best wishes, but they could function. And so they have to work. They've done a lot of work on it. And they want to, you know, pull it down. And so that's why I asked for the 11.66. It's a functional budget, but it's, you know, it's not what they want. So that was the gist of our meeting.
All right.
We asked them that the information we got, just to demonstrate where the money's coming from, how we got from the initial submission, you know, and so forth. And the information about the positions, too, was information we asked at the beginning.
Any questions for Finance? We've touched upon it a lot tonight. Communication...You all set, John?
Yep, all set.
Communication Policy Subcommittee?
We have not met, but the updates from MASC discussion is coming after the budget. We could wait on that.
Curriculum and Data Trends Subcommittee?
We have not met, but we've been given some tasks tonight, so I'm adjourned. We'll be meeting soon.
Personnel Subcommittee?
We did meet an executive session at the last meeting, but I don't have my notes, so we will cover that the next week.
Two minutes right now. Okay. Resource and Capital Planning Subcommittee?
We have not met, but we will soon.
Student Services and Achievement Subcommittee?
Hang on. Thought category was busy with budget times and gave him a little time off to develop the budget.
How does work in Subcommittee?
Moving right along. All right, Correspondence. Anybody have anything for Correspondence?
Future events. The LPAC is meeting tomorrow night at the Ullburn Public Library in the program room at 6:30.
Okay. Excellent. I have a few. We have received, as per usual, a few emails regarding the budget, of course. It's on everyone's mind. And Mr. Scarborough's comments earlier, exactly. We're hoping, you know, I don't mind reading the emails. We keep them on file. It is something that kind of gives us a feel of, you know, what people are looking for. But also just that more and more people are involved. And I think that's super important. So receiving emails about that regarding the budget with hopes, most of the comments were that we would not cut anything and keep it as strong as we can, as well as the FISED twice a week, emails are coming in. I did want to make one other comment. I'm not sure if this is new from the last time or how often they get. But I know we're not mentioning names, but I just, I don't know if the cable's able to scan across and see some of the great artwork that is adorning our walls here. It's various grades and ages and so on. And I know Tannenfest is coming up.
I was saying, you can see more this weekend.
Yes, it'd be a lot of that. But I've just, you know, kind of stopped recognizing it unfortunately because of names and saying the students' names out loud. But it's well represented throughout this room here. We appreciate that. I did have another one, and I'm not sure if we want to wait till the next meeting. But I think we missed it at the beginning. So I don't know if we can still do a moment of silence. I would like to...No, do you want to...I mean, we can stand. We can just say it sitting and just take a moment of silence either way. But the teacher that I had, Mr. Peter Bronker, has passed away. Has passed.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a motion, you please stand for a moment of silence for Mr. Bronker. Information I just received tonight from educators here in our system for Mr. Peter Bronker. May he rest in peace. Thank you. Thanks for the great information.
No problem.
For the next meeting.
Yeah, he was a great guy.
One more event, actually, that's coming up also is Friday, the Council of Social Concerns...
Yes.
Yearly Auction Gala at the Crown Plaza.
That's my date, right? I won't be there.
What's that?
And then the first Sunday in May is the run for kids from the Boys and Girls.
And all municipal employees are invited to sign up. And Mayor Galvin is reimbursing for that. So even if you're not going, just feed that money. I can't say. I'll let you know when the check comes.
What we need is...
Coming out of the school committee.
Yeah, I know. I was going to say, we have to be a deduction.
You should get like 15 million people to run, times 10.
That's before you ran.
That would be good.
Got all those kids out running. We proud.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, I have another event.
Yes, Ms. Crowley.
There is a community health and wellness fair on Saturday sponsored by St. John Baptist Church. And it's going to be free information about various health issues. And it's at 38-40 Everett Street in Ullburn.
Nice.
And that's at 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, which is awesome. So...
There you go.
St. John's.
I had the privilege of photographing the pastor from that church. He came in for a couple of headshots. It was kind of nice. Meeting him and talking to him. He's a nice guy. All right. So that was Correspondence. Anything else on Correspondence for anybody? All right. Do we have future agenda items? Anything?
I think I might have mentioned last time, but it was about discipline and sort of getting some data. And that can go to a Subcommittee, you know, go to the Student Services Subcommittee to look at discipline and break down, you know. It's an important thing that the committee should be looking at regularly.
Any else? Future agenda items? Good? All right. We will be going into...
We don't need it.
Oh, we don't?
We don't need it. So we will be adjourning.
Yes.
More should do adjourn.
Second.
Yes.
Third.
Sometimes.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody.